It's looking right now, what can we do at Willow Way? Because we have major revenue that can come from that golf course, working in partnership with the city of Garden Grove. And we've already done that, we've already have a joint venture effort, but there's a lot of meetings that are going on that are getting better and better. I'm the one that's endorsed by Tom Daley, and I sure hope that Tom Lumber, who's gonna speak here a bit later today, who I'm endorsing is also endorsing me, are gonna be in Sacramento, because our relationship with Sacramento matters. And now that Gavin Newsom is coming in, we're gonna be working with him, and that matters because we're able to compete for dollars. And we are in competition with other cities. We can say what we want, but the reality is that Irvine and Anaheim and all these cities around us are competing. They're competing for shopping, they're competing for residences, they're competing in every single way, for every single business that we have. So as you look at the city, think, where were we before? And in the future, know that with me, we can be better. Thank you.
We have more prostitutes. Are you proud of that?
Thank you very much for your time here today. I just wanna bring something to you. The mayor just said that he goes over to OCTA, texts Judge Carter about solving a homeless issue. About eight weeks ago, at a city council meeting, he said that the police should harass our homeless people. So then if they get harassed, maybe they'll go to another city. Here's what happens when Judge Carter would say to that. You harass homeless people, I will stop you from enforcing the law when it comes to homelessness. That's irresponsible. These are the kind of words that our mayor says constantly, and because you don't know him well enough, people believe it. I'm telling you, I did not, I had to go back and forth on whether or not I was going to continue to run. But the reason I'm running is this. I don't want our city to go bankrupt. He has two years left. Do you know what'll happen in two years if he can't run again? He's gonna cash in, ladies and gentlemen. This is his last two years. What you will get with me is an individual who works for the San Antonio Fight School District, who has created a program that over 1,000 students are a part of now. A group of Latino kids went to Florida last year and won the national championship. Let me do what I do as an educator, and let me take the lead so that you could see what kind of a Santa Ana we could have, because we were moving in that direction. Until the mayor pulled his politics and shut everything down. It's time for a new mayor. Remember, South Inahero, teacher, independent, motivated, and, and more importantly, is experiments. We can make it happen. Thank you.
Facts matter. There's something called the Jones Act. And when I go talk to Judge Carter, it's not at OCTA, it's at the federal court across the street that I helped build, that wouldn't be here without those efforts. The Jones Act means that if you go to a homeless person and they're loitering, or they're hurting somebody, or they're doing something illegal, and you arrest them without first offering a place for them to go, you're gonna get sued. And we have been sued. To the tune of $70,000 per a homeless person. We arrested seven a few months ago, we had to pay almost half a million dollars out. I'm trying to save money for the city. I'm trying to make the city more efficient. That's why we're building the shelters. So when we go to a homeless person, we can say, "Do you want to go to a homeless shelter?", and give them that opportunity. Because of the Jones Act, it's a law. It's the reason LA is in such a mess, because they can't deal with the Jones Act. All they have are temporary restraining orders. And that's what I don't want to have happen here in Santa Ana.
So, I agree with the mayor that facts do matter. And the fact is, you did say that let's harass homeless people so we can get them out of here. The other thing is, facts do matter. We have fewer officers on the street today under our mayor's 22 years of leadership. We do not have a Santa Ana Fire Department today because of our mayor's leadership. And our 911 response calls are the slowest they've ever been. Thank you to the leadership that we have here. 22 years. Give them a chance. Let me show you what Santa Ana can look like from a guy who really cares.
Well, we've seen a very interesting mayoral debate. I think it's the first one-on-one I've ever seen in Santa Ana for a while. So again, thank you for both candidates for coming out and joining us and sharing your opinions. Thank you to everybody for being here and putting together the panel. And we'll take a small break and then shift over to the city council decisions.
Can we hand over the city council candidates to the center?
Huh? No, I was, I was getting promoted. No, I haven't, like, for a phone, was it? Well, like, I'm, yeah. Like, I can be, be access to the...
So right now, we're on the break. They're switching, we're switching over to the city council forum. The mayors just, the mayoral candidates just went. So we'll be starting soon. But there's more empty ones, I think.
What's up with the fancy jacket? It was cold. How'd you react to Monday? Oh, you actually, maybe you have one. No, you probably don't. Yeah, you do. I don't play poker, I am. Sorry, that's the thing I would do. You do it this way, because it's true. Like, you do it this way. I would do it too, but I don't.
These folks are running for Ward 2, 4, and 6 for Santa Ana City Council. Hi Kathy.
Okay, welcome back. You ready to go? We can hear you, okay? So we have a total of 11 candidates for three different ward seats that are up. Ward number 4, Ward number 2, Ward number 6. In Ward number 4, we have Roman Reyna. They don't have film, sir, because he's not here. In Ward 6, we have Milna Velasquez. Milna Velasquez, I'm sorry, Milna. Milna Velasquez. We have Melinda Mendoza. We have Cecilia Iglesias, who did not show up. For Ward number 2, we have the most candidates. We have Paul Gonzalez. We have Miguel Gonzalez. We have, I'm sorry, we have Alfonso Seja Villa. We have Miguel Gonzalez. David Peñalosa. We have Ilma Macías. And Sandra Peña Serviento. So there are your candidates that have come out to debate in front of me. We're going to start with short introductions by each candidate, a total of one minute apiece. And I'm just gonna go straight from this way back. We'll vary it up on different questions to try to keep it as spontaneous as possible. We'll start with you, Paul.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Gonzalez. I'm running for city council for Ward 2. Thank you so much for coming out this evening and hearing what we have to say and letting us introduce ourselves to you. As you get to know me better tonight, I believe that the number one thing you'll take away is that I am independent. I am truly independent. I'm not beholden to special interests. I'm not here trying to build a family dynasty. I am here to work for you. And when I am on the city council, that is what I will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Alfonso.
Hey, how you guys doing? Number one, Alfonso Seja. I'm running for Ward 2. Again, I'm running because I care for the city. I see a lot of changes, and I would like to be involved. And spirit has changed with positivity for everybody, for my family, for your family. Some of my issues are housing and homelessness. And I think we need to address those issues because the city's taking the, the homeless crisis, and we could fix it. Hopefully, I do regain your support and your vote. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roman Reyna. I'm running for city council Ward 4. And first of all, I want to thank you for taking your time and being here. And I know that's something we spoke about briefly, but we kind of run over that fact. And to me, time is the most valuable thing that we possess. And what we choose to spend our time speaks volumes of who we are and what's important to us. And the fact that we're here today speaks volumes about how we want a better community in our city of Santa Ana. Myself, I was born in the city of Santa Ana, the community hospital, 1969. I've lived in Santa Ana my entire life, and I've worked with families and commuters for the last 30 years. I have the experience working, being on the school board as well as being on the city council. I know what it is to make tough decisions. I know how to make changes for the community. My work speaks for itself. And I hope that you see the bigger picture and look in my direction and vote for Roman Reyna Ward 4. Thank you.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so very much for being here this evening. It shows a lot, a lot of courage, especially because of the situations that we have in some of the forums, which I thank you so very much again. My name is Ilma Macías. I'm working to represent you on District 2, or Ward 2, in Santa Ana for 44 years. I've raised my sons, I have five sons, ages 28 to 43. And I currently live in my own home for 33 years. This moment, I have been involved in different communities, Measure C, Measure G, Measure Q, the Santa Ana College, Community Company, Communication Village Forum, which represents the 60th anniversary of associations. Also, police volunteer and con enforcement volunteer. I have over 35 years of experience of working for my community and with my community. And at this moment, I'm looking for your support. Thank you so very much.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Latino Health Access and all of you guys for being here tonight. Miguel Mike Gonzalez, born in UCLA, raised in Guadalajara, Jalisco, at the age of about 17. I came down here to Santa Ana. Been here for the rest of my life. And I'm a business owner. I own a couple of restaurants and a security guard company for over 30 years. Santa Ana Security Services. I love my community. I have always worked with my community, documented and undocumented. I just love you guys. Thank you very much.
I'm Sandra Peña Serviento, and I'm a Santa Ana native. I'm an arts commissioner. I'm also one of the leaders in my neighborhood association, and I'm a media arts teacher. I've been teaching media arts since 1994, during the hiatus while I was also working in Spanish-language television. I attended local schools, Monroe, Roosevelt, Saint Anne's, and Modern Day, before going on to UCLA, UC San Diego, and then staying and working in Spanish-language television, Univision, Tonmundo. I've done a lot of work in other municipalities, other cities, like San Diego, Los Angeles, San Antonio, Texas. And I've had a lot of success there and here also. I have an amazing track record that's all my own. I've built quite a name in arts and entertainment and in social justice. Check out my website to see what I have built on my own without, you know, any kind of additional help there. That's www.santanaforssantaana.com. And I'm basically here because I see the potential for Santa Ana, and I want to help build it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Melina.
Muy buenas noches, bienvenidos. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and especially thank you for Latino Health Access to give us the opportunity to, for the audience to get to know us. The reason I'm running for the city council Ward 6 is because I am truly dedicated and committed to my community. I've been a lifelong resident here since we immigrated to Santa Ana in 1965, with the exception of a few years when I was in the military. My experience is, I've been a commissioner with the ETAC, which is the Environmental and Transportation Advisory Council. I was the president of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. I worked for the city manager's office in the early 80s. I am the current president of the Rancho Santeros Community College Board, which I'm in charge of millions in the budget. I was a secretary of the West End Commission, community-oriented policing, so I know about public safety. And I am the first female commander of the United Mexican-American Veterans Association. I am here to serve you, and there's more to come.
Thank you, Melina. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Peñalosa. I'm born and raised here in Santa Ana, proud product of our Santa Ana Unified School District. My parents immigrated from the state of Guerrero, Mexico back in the 70s. As somebody mentioned, I'm known as El Watcher de Paula, which is slang for we come from. Been here for a very long time. Have always been very active in our community, volunteering with my alma mater, a satellite high school, or volunteering with our kids in the Illumination Foundation, which is very low-poverty, low-income kids. And that's really what it's about. I wanted to come back and be that person that these kids can look up to, you know, help our community move forward and grow and thrive, because that's the number one thing that, that's where it starts, with our kids. And, you know, growing up, you know, I've been able to achieve my wildest dreams. I've starred in dozens of national commercials. I've remained here in the city, have made a career at a local manufacturing company. And I want to be that vision for Santa Ana kids and say, you know what? If that guy could do it, why cannot, you know? Because that's the stigma that our city has. So thank you, guys, and again, David Peñalosa.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. My name is Milna Velasquez. And I was born and raised here in Santa Ana. And pregnant at 14, I went ahead and succeeded. I did not become a statistic. I went to college, educated myself. My parents came from Zacatecas, Mexico, when they were 12 years old. So I'm one of you. I know what it's like to work hard, to achieve, to have a master's degree. I create revenue for companies. We can do it here, and you all can do it. We don't have to live this way. We all deserve better. Please vote, Milna Velasquez, for Ward 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're gonna move down for a section and have any of you members come up and have their question answered.
So like I said, I'm Siqueira Lee, from Rosales, George County. Considering the revenue that is set to come in from the cannabis tax dollars into the general fund, how would you ensure that there is a community oversight as well as a diversifying of programming that is open and accessible to undocumented, formally incarcerated, and system-involved youth? What percentage of the general fund are you willing to invest to create the robust infrastructure needed to facilitate these programs?
Thank you again. I'm gonna start in the middle here, Miguel. We'll go this way and then start at the end. Okay?
Well, I'm the one that started March this year in Santa Ana. I love my community. I have always marched every first, May 1st. And I have always worked with my community. I can tell you, we try to, to work as much as we can for our undocumented people. There is a lot, a lot of leaders that don't want to work with them. And it's okay. It's okay. We got, we got enough leaders to, to work for the, the people that really need it. And the reason I'm running is because we really need to go to an upper level, to be at the city council so we can really do much for our community, for that kind of people, I mean, for the undocumented people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miguel. Sandra.
Okay, with regards to the cannabis industry, I think we need to move beyond just selling this controlled substance, and we need to think a bit more expansively. We're located between Disneyland and some of the best beaches in California. We have 73 million people visiting just 10 minutes away from us. And here we have this, this potential industry, cannabis. And we should really be tapping it into the larger tourism industry. We should be thinking like Colorado. We should be thinking about shuttling in people from South County, maybe, to have some kind of a culinary experience. We need to offer maybe ecosystems around our cannabis businesses, perhaps yoga studios and other compatible businesses that are not necessarily about selling this herb itself. So there's a lot we could do to expand this, this market in ways that would really bring in a lot more money than just focusing on the controlled substance itself. And once we bring that revenue in, then we will really have a lot of resources to spend. I certainly think that arts and culture would be a wonderful match for cannabis, definitely youth services as well. Thank you.
I would allocate at least 50%, depending on the analysis that we do, because, you know, our youth are treasures of the future. And we need to invest heavily. I'm a teacher for the Santa Ana Unified School District. And I am already beginning to do that. In my classrooms, I give them the vision that they need so that they too can get good educations, good job, and that they can have those resources that I have. You know, there is no reason why there shouldn't be a degree in every home. Here I am, an immigrant. I have a master's, and I'm getting to do, ready to do my doctorate degree. And that can happen to all of us, all of our, all of our youth. So our youth is, are very important. And that money, the majority of the money, needs to be invested back into the, the programs that are gonna get the kids out of drugs, away from the gangs, and focus on education. The path to education rather than jail.
Thank you.
That's an excellent question. We actually, most of us here actually met with the Cannabis in the Street today. And we talked about that $2.5 million revenue. But I think it's too early to say how much money is actually going to come in, because what I was told today is that most of that money was used to combat those illegal dispensaries, to combat that code enforcement, and go back into building this industry and grow it. So I don't know what that actual tax revenue will be. I do believe that it should be allocated to what was on that ballot when we first voted to legalize it. Public safety, youth programs, education, all of the above. You know, there needs to be, you know, you can't just take it all to one, you know, group. It has to be separated in various different departments of our city's needs. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Melina.
You know, I think it's very, very important for us to reestablish where we're gonna re-invest that money. We have a lot of companies that want to do internships for our community, for our children, for, to educate them, to make sure that they have a career they go to. I myself make sure that I mentor a lot of women, males, to make sure that they, I even have interns within my company to make sure that they have availability to go to school, to get new jobs. And I do believe that we need to re-invest that information, that money. But we don't have the information to do that yet. So I think once we have that, of course, we're gonna revisit that and re-establish it at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Melina. Can you turn that mic off?
Thank you so much for the question. It's a, it's a very insightful question, and I'll actually give a shot at answering it. Right now, the assets are, the revenue is intended to be allocated 1/3 to youth programs, 1/3 to administration, 1/3 to enforcement. That's inappropriate. We need to redo the numbers. We need to make sure that at least 2/3 of that revenue is going to both services. And you touched on something really important, not just youth services, but restorative efforts to, to help those who are formerly incarcerated, especially those whose lives were destroyed by this very industry, when it was an underground industry and people's families were turned upside down when this was ridiculously looked down upon and criminalized. And now that it's not criminalized, we have an obligation to help those families rise up and thrive and take advantage of this new industry. So we need to ensure that we are investing in education and giving our community the opportunity to participate in this new industry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent question. Personally, this is what I feel. I think that at least 30 to 40% of that revenue should be allocated for youth programs and early intervention programs. It should be also with key stakeholders. An advisory committee or council should develop for input from the city or community. I only have one concern, is basically the special interest, POA. As you guys may know, they will be asking for more money, for more pensions. And I know we have some council members who are running, candidates who are running here, and are being supported by the special interest. I really believe that even if all these people were accountable to the response, be more scrutinized about what they say, because they will say something now, but once they get elected, things will change. It was not what you guys think it was.
So this is my question. Roman Reyna, city council Ward 4. You know, the question was, how much should we dedicate to our young people? I've been advocating for young people my entire life, because I know what beautiful things can happen when you invest time and energy into young people. I think I've done that over my years, over 30 years, and a lot of those young people have become leaders in our community. One of them, Michelle Martinez, became city council owner. One of them, Claudia Aguirre, just got her PhD. A couple of gentlemen ended up starting a company that went international, which is small and simple. When you invest into young people, beautiful things can happen. And I've had a history of continuing doing that. But as soon as I got into the city council, I realized that we were only offering one sport program to our young people. I was able to work together, collaborate, to be able to offer six youth programs to keep them engaged in positive activities. How much percentage should we go in there? There's some unknown information, which makes it more challenging. Even though it makes it challenging, either we make this a priority or we don't. Either we make this a priority to help our young people, regardless of that information that we have that is gonna make things harder or not. Either we choose to help our young people or we choose to listen to anything else. I advocate for our young people.
Ilma, see you guys for Ward 2. We're talking about money of businesses that come to our city because they have another option. I truly believe, as I have five sons, that it is, it was for me the last of the businesses that I wanted in Santa Ana. Why? Because even for certain people, it's meant for research, resource, for others is an option. But it's here, what are we gonna do about it? First of all, the money that are coming for those, from those cannabis businesses, I think has to be placed in our community, for our youth, recreational... Parques recreativos, centros de educación, edificios juveniles. Especialmente para aquellos jóvenes que han graduado después de la escuela y no tienen la oportunidad de ir a una educación superior. En este momento, creo que nuestro inversión en nuestra comunidad es esencial y esos fondos deben volver a su comunidad. Muchas gracias. Eva, ustedes.
Entonces, van a hacerme una pregunta sobre inmigración. Sanctuary, la comunidad indocumentada ha sido bajo ataque desde que el gobierno de Trump entró en office. Atacos contra California, especialmente incluso dentro de Orange County, han vuelto a sentirse agotados y han causado riesgos para defender o luchar contra el estado de Sanctuary. Santa Ana es por ley una ciudad de Sanctuary y proporciona representación legal a sus residentes y ha incluido un line item en el fondo general durante más de dos años. Si eres elegido, ¿estás dispuesto a defender el estado de Sanctuary de la ciudad y que priorice el fondo de defensa legal como un servicio central?
Lo haría porque si no tenemos la protección de la ciudad de Sanctuary, que esencialmente estamos criminalizando una gran parte de nuestra población, eso significa que los crímenes no podrían ser reportados. Estamos creando un desastre, una sociedad entera, una sombra de sociedad que puede no querer venir para incluso reportar crímenes. Y eso no es saludable, eso no es saludable. He visto con mis estudiantes cuán importante es para sus familias tener acceso, sentirse sin miedo, salir y buscar los servicios de la ciudad, los servicios escolares. No podemos tener a nuestros estudiantes, a sus padres temerosos para venir y participar en la sociedad. Así que definitivamente priorizaría mantener nuestro estado de ciudad de Sanctuary y ciertamente proteger la capacidad de las familias para luchar contra los desafíos legales para que puedan permanecer juntos. Eso es realmente el núcleo de nuestra sociedad aquí en Santa Ana. Somos muy orientados a la familia, tenemos una población muy mixta y mezclada y necesitamos que todos se sientan seguros y seguras aquí.
Como progresista demócrata, estoy de acuerdo en incluir y proteger a todos ustedes, todos nosotros. Soy inmigrante también. No quiero que alguien se excluya. Creo que nuestros oficiales de la ciudad deben ser usados específicamente para sus deberes y la ICES no nos puede forzar a usar nuestros oficiales para conducir asesinatos de inmigración. Somos un pueblo y no importa qué color eres, qué país eres, somos todos humanos. Y estoy aquí para asegurar que Santa Ana no es para vender. Así que si quieres tener una ciudad progresista, entonces soy tu candidato. Por favor, vota en Nelly Dandosa el 6 de noviembre.
Gracias.
Como dije, soy parte de la población de inmigrantes que vino aquí. Sabes, trabajamos muy duro, como muchos de nosotros, como muchos de ustedes que han trabajado durante años. Y estoy muy orgulloso de eso. Y debemos proteger a las personas que ya están aquí. Debemos proteger a los que siguen el derecho, trabajan muy duro y darles la mano para salir al mundo porque ahí es donde comienza. Sabes, si educamos y proporcionamos las herramientas, sabes, podremos lograr éxito como comunidad y avanzar y crecer y prosperar y no, sabes, seguir con esa misma afirmación que hemos tenido durante estos años. Así que sí, eso es David Pino Loza.
Gracias David.
Creo que todos estamos aquí por ustedes. Así que creo que todos estamos por protegerlos. Como dije, mi padre vino aquí cuando tenía 12 años en Zacatecas, México. Así que queremos ser capaces de continuar ese patrón. Queremos asegurarnos de que logres cuando estés aquí. Y no me temeré a vivir aquí y no me temeré a salir porque no es justo. Así que sí, por supuesto, continuaremos esto y continuaremos protegiéndolos de la manera que tenemos. Gracias.
Gracias Megan.
En cuanto a Sanctuary, no equivoco, estoy del lado de nuestras familias. Estoy del lado de todos los residentes de Santa Ana. Y cuando se trata del fondo de defensa legal, absolutamente, es un servicio central y no equivoco en eso.
Juan José Caballero, nuevamente, tengo una prioridad. Personalmente, tengo una iniciativa. Sabes, es candidato a ser adhendido por P.O.A. Como ustedes saben, van a pedir más dinero, más presupuestos. Y como saben, David, quizás el fondo de defensa legal podría ser amenazado y ignorado si eliges a estas personas. Por mi permiso, sí, apoyo a la ciudad de Sanctuary, los fondos de defensa legal. Estos son muy importantes, dado que el gobierno está, ya sabes, reiterando para nuestra comunidad, nuestros vecinos, nuestra identidad. Pero nuevamente, manténlo en mente, P.O.A., siempre quieren más dinero, quieren más presupuestos, quieren más dinero. Realmente toman el 50% del presupuesto. Así que sé dónde votar el 6 de noviembre. Gracias.
Sí, sabes, América es única. Sabes, comenzó cuando todos venimos de algún lugar, de algún lugar menos libre. Ya sea tú o tus abuelos o tus great-grandparents, todos nosotros, todos nosotros somos exactamente así. En la escuela, recuerdo sentarme en el salón de clases donde hacíamos el flagel. Y solía rir y jugar con mis amigos al lado porque lo que decían, no sentía que lo incluía. Lo que decían, no parecía que estuvieran objetivando mí y mis vecinos. Terminé involucrándome con la comunidad. Terminé ganando mi primera elección, mi primera elección que gané y miré ese flagel de manera diferente. Miré ese flagel, que el sueño americano es achievable para mí también. Y tenemos familias que constantemente están arriesgándose por mejores oportunidades. ¿Cómo no apoyamos las ciudades de Sanctuary? ¿Cómo no ayudamos a ellos? Miro a ellos, que era mi gran gran abuelo viniendo a este país. ¿Quién está ayudándolo? ¿O quién está haciéndolo más difícil? Todos venimos de lugares diferentes. Todos queremos ese sueño americano. Todos venimos de lugares diferentes y todos queremos la misma cosa, que sea una mejor vida para nosotros mismos. Y por supuesto, apoyo, absolutamente.
Gracias. Inmigración, ciudades de Sanctuary, creo que, como Roman dijo, todos venimos de todas partes del mundo, cada uno de nosotros. Y a menos que entendamos esa parte, tenemos que dejar que eso nos detenga para avanzar. No recuerdo, creo que fue en 1974 y no recuerdo nunca haber visto inmigración. El único caso de vacuna es cuando vas a San Diego o cruzas el borde. Pero creo que si enfocas tu educación y tus familias, hay muchos monstruos que estarán por delante de ti. Y a veces usamos eso como excusa para no venir. Nunca he visto una familia que se detenga por eso. Educación, mejorarse, estar unidos con tus familias. Creo que todos tenemos desafíos y la inmigración es solo uno de ellos. Gracias.
Ciudad de Sanctuary.
Claro, yo lo soy. No, 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 es mi turno, no. Lo siento. Exacto. Bueno, como dije, una de las razones por las que estoy aquí tratando de convertirme en concejal es porque realmente creo que podemos hacer mucho mejor en la cuestión del proyecto de reforma de inmigración. Necesitamos líderes fuertes para ayudarnos a conseguir el proyecto de reforma de inmigración. Pasarlo. Sí, Sanctuary, está bien. Hemos estado tratando de ello durante años, 25, 28 años. Y soy el que inició el martes por la reforma de inmigración. Y déjame decirte algo. Hay muchas personas aquí, que veo a todos mis amigos aquí diciendo que sí. No los veo en el martes. Necesitamos trabajar más en esa cuestión hasta que pasemos el proyecto de reforma de inmigración. Muchas gracias.
Entonces voy a hacer la siguiente pregunta sobre presupuesto, pensiones y policía. Eva, vamos a empezar contigo, regresamos hacia este lado y luego hacia ese lado. Así que la ciudad, su ciudad está enfrentando una crisis financiera y en muchas opiniones se dirige directamente a la bankruptcya. Con los aumentos en los costos de pensiones, aumentos y el déficit llevando a la cárcel de la ciudad, la P.D. de Santa Ana solo está quitando el 50% de la capital general de la ciudad. ¿Sostenerías una independiente análisis forense del presupuesto de la ciudad para ver dónde están siendo malgestionados los fondos y si mantener la cárcel de Santa Ana es económicamente feasible? Además, ¿puede ser abordada la seguridad pública de una manera que reduzca el presupuesto de la policía mientras diversifica la forma en que la ciudad responde a la violencia de la comunidad al emplear más trabajadores de intervención de crisis que no están bajo el departamento de la policía? Esta es una buena pregunta.
Bien. Bueno, lo que tenemos ahora en nuestro presupuesto, pensiones, departamento de la policía, seguridad, creo que es una pregunta enorme. Primero, sabemos lo que tenemos. Tenemos los libros en frente de nosotros. Todos los que han visto hace unos minutos, o por ejemplo, el concejal, el jefe de la mayor, ni siquiera saben el budget. Lo que tenemos en el departamento de la policía, puertas cerradas en apoyo. Creo que estos individuos están, algunos de ellos están perdiendo la vida en nuestra ciudad. Ahora, quiero entender algunas de las preguntas, pues estoy escuchando. Entiendo, creo que en la seguridad de nuestra comunidad es lo primero y lo más importante. Soy una viva aquí para el departamento de la policía y puedo decirle a cada uno de los colectivos de Santa Ana, y con todas las condiciones, ¿puedo centrar más dinero en esos recursos? Sí. Para mí, como residente, creo que la seguridad es lo primero y lo más importante. De lo contrario, no podrías sentirte seguro en nuestra ciudad. Gracias.
Gracias Megan. Entonces, nuevamente, quiero resumir y volver a la pregunta. ¿Sostenerías un análisis forense independiente del presupuesto de la ciudad para ver si los fondos están siendo malgestionados y si la cárcel es feasible o no? Y también, ¿sostenerías formas de reducir la violencia de la comunidad al emplear a personas además de los oficiales?
Sí, es mucho. Análisis forense, no, lo siento. Roman Reyna, concejal del consejo, por favor. Análisis forense, absolutamente. Definitivamente, mirar los libros y averiguar exactamente lo que está pasando. Porque parte del desafío es que tenemos miembros del consejo municipal que están haciendo trabajo parcial con responsabilidades de tiempo completo. Tenemos personal del consejo que trabaja en tiempo completo y no siempre están a la altura de la información que estamos buscando. Así que esa es una cuestión necesaria, una pregunta diferente de si queremos que el consejo municipal gaste más tiempo y se enfocen en lo que está pasando. El segundo, cuando hablamos de ingreso, presupuesto y dinero, una de las cosas que no has oído mucho es el dólar latino. Son 110 acres que se acerca a derrocar. Está preguntando a la comunidad ahora, preguntando a la comunidad, ¿qué les gustaría ver esos 110 acres? Yo, si no lo reconoces todavía, el dólar latino es absolutamente fuerte. El mercado latino es enorme. Va a ser un asunto de tiempo antes de que algún ciudad haga esto. Sería genial si nuestra ciudad tomara la lead, crear un centro cultural y comunitario para que podamos tener acá theater, interior acá theater, deportes, restaurantes.
Gracias Roman. Juan José.
Nuevamente, Juan José Caballero, por favor. Definitivamente apoyo un análisis forense. Creo que necesitamos mirar los libros, hacerlos open a la publicidad, a usted y a mí. En términos de realmente asignar o apropiar fondos de P.O.A. y demás, nuevamente, estamos contentos de determinar lo que está pasando con el análisis forense para que podamos hacer un enfoque intelectual y pensador. Creo que necesitamos un consejo de asesorías, así que vamos a ir de esa manera. Y según el análisis forense, es que hay mucho malgestionamiento. Nuevamente, necesitamos un consejo de asesorías para el consejo, el concejal y para que puedan tomar decisiones adecuadas. Sí, no quiero interpretar la seguridad de nuestra comunidad. Necesitamos seguridad, es uno de esos aspectos que necesitamos, ya sabes, protección y demás. Así que nuevamente, es una pregunta muy complicada, pero en general necesitamos algunos cambios y un diálogo posterior sobre lo que podemos hacer. Gracias.
Bien, así que análisis forense, absolutamente, necesitamos eso. Necesitamos asegurarnos de que nuestro dinero está siendo gastado wisely y adecuadamente. En cuanto a la cárcel, creo fundamentalmente que derivar ingresos de la encarcelación es inwol. Así que no estoy de acuerdo en tratar de llevar ese boom doggo a la cárcel. Creo que necesitamos encontrar formas creativas de reusarlo que realmente generen ingresos para la ciudad de una manera que podamos ser orgullosos. Y en términos de divertir fondos de seguridad pública a la prevención, por supuesto, simplemente tiene sentido. Tiene sentido enfocar menos energía en reaccionar cuando el crimen ha ocurrido y enfocar más energía en crear una sociedad donde menos crímenes ocurren. Pero antes de llegar a ninguno de esos, nosotros en esta sala tenemos una obligación de asegurarnos de elegir a las personas correctas, personas que no son un cheque vacío al P.O.A. Y eso es lo que representa el P.O.A.
Absolutamente no. Así que sí, estamos adhendidos al P.O.A., pero te diré de primera mano que necesitamos la aplicación de la ley porque nací aquí. Y déjame decirte, tengo vecinos que fueron paralizados por la lluvia, que murieron, porque no teníamos la correcta aplicación de la ley. No teníamos suficiente aplicación de la ley allá afuera. ¿Necesitamos reestructurar las cosas? Claro, por supuesto que sí. Pero necesitamos ser protegidos. No quiero que mis hijos o sus hijos sean atrapados muertos, matados, matados. Nací y nació aquí. Tengo amigos aquí que no me conocen desde que tenía tres. Nacimos en las peores partes de Santa Ana. Necesitamos nuestra aplicación de la ley. Lo que tenemos que hacer es trabajar juntos, trabajar con ellos, no temeroslos. Así que sí, estamos apoyados, no respaldados, lo que sea. Somos respaldados. Es nuestra comunidad segura. Eso es lo que queremos. Así que necesitamos asegurarnos de que eso es una prioridad para la seguridad de todos nuestros hijos.
Nuevamente, como dice, deja de responder, puedes decidir si quieres o no.
Bueno, todos. Sí, apoyo un análisis forense completo del presupuesto entero y ver dónde está y dónde está este dinero en toda la ciudad. Sabes, definitivamente creo en una fuerte seguridad pública. Creo en programas de comunidad fuertes. Creo en una fuerte intervención de bandas. Todas estas cosas van a necesitar coexistir. Cuando dicen, ¿cuántos fondos vas a tomar del presupuesto? ¿Sabes qué? ¿Qué tal no hacer lo que el consejo ha hecho y en realidad encontrar formas de generar ingresos? Como Roman mencionó, Willowey Goff, el proyecto de realización de la Playa Mayor. Todas estas cosas, bajando por la calle Ford, todos los edificios están vacíos. Eso es vergonzoso. Tenemos mucho potencial para generar realmente ingresos en nuestra ciudad, no solo hablar del dinero que tenemos. ¿Qué tal pensar fuera de la caja y ignorar nuestro ingreso? Aumentar nuestro presupuesto para poder asignar fondos para todos, no solo a la policía, sino a los programas de comunidad, sabes, programas de secundaria, intervención de bandas. Necesitamos mirar todas estas cosas y pensar fuera de la caja. Poniendo campañas, caminando por Harvard and Hazard, contaba 27 prostitutas la otra noche.
No estuve adhendido al P.O.A. y ni siquiera ni siquiera recibí la oportunidad de entrevistar porque cuando presenté mi solicitud, indicé que realmente necesitamos mirar este presupuesto seriamente. Y si el dinero no está ahí, no voy a votar para aumentar la pensión para los oficiales de la policía, por eso. Estoy de acuerdo, necesitamos seguridad, todos necesitamos seguridad. Todos tenemos que sentirnos seguros y seguros y podemos hacerlo. Pero no a costa del resto de nosotros. Así que apoyo un análisis para la gestión de la cuenta. Necesitamos ver qué desperdicios y desperdicios innecesarios han sido. ¿Dónde están las reservas que teníamos? ¿Dónde están los millones? ¿La cárcel es feasible? ¿Sabes qué? Necesitamos mirar eso. No queremos que nuestros hijos estén en la cárcel. ¿Por qué no los poner en el camino a la universidad en lugar de eso? Así que necesitamos la cárcel. Violencia de la comunidad. ¿Sabes qué? La Comunidad Universitaria Santa Ana está trabajando en esto. Tenemos programas de intervención que ayudan a los niños. En lugar de la cárcel, enfocamos en la educación.
Sandra Peña Serraminto, por favor. Apoyo análisis forense. Creo que los análisis son cosas buenas. Y creo que encontraremos, sabes, tendremos una buena imagen clara de dónde está nuestro punto de partida. También creo que la cárcel no es una buena usada en este momento. Creo que es una especie de, ya sabes, una especie de albatros. Y creo que en realidad podríamos hacer mucho más dinero usando él para fines diferentes. Estoy parcial a la tecnología, ya que está他已经检测和连接 y tiene alta seguridad y tiene aire, ya sabes, control climático, pequeños cubitos como desarrolladores aman. También tengo, el único candidato tiene un plan de seguridad pública complejo. Así que puedes ir a sanyetopersonana.com/... So you can go to sanyanapresident.com/safety. And my safety plan does involve how we bring back our park rangers, how we involve our neighborhood watch, how we invest in private security, so we don't have, you know, these giant, you know, commitments to pensions and full-time employment for our officers. And also successful community policing model, so please check that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Be good.
Thank you. I want to start saying, I'm not endorsed by nobody. I'm endorsed by my money, by my friends, by my family, a few leaders, a few business owners. And about the jail, I hear a few saying, we don't need a jail, we need a jail. We need to do a study. We need to understand what's out with our city. We can't, I mean, we all hate jail. Nobody wants to be in jail, right? So we don't want a jail. But sometimes, if it's a revenue, I'm a business owner, I'm a businessman. If it's a revenue that we can use, and we can make money for our city, and then implement it into the criminals, gang members, different crowds, we can use it. So, thank you.
So this time around, that's okay. So the next question is on housing and community development. So, as housing becomes more of an issue here in Santa Ana, many residents are essentially being pushed further into poverty, homelessness, even being displaced in the community altogether. Some estimates are it's about a third of the population, about 100,000 people, that are spending more than 60% of their income on rent. And a third of the population has less than a yearly income of top $35,000. So the question is, yesterday, you have it in front of you, the community presented the Remain and Prosper platform for the city council urging adoption of a comprehensive package of policies that would keep Santa Ana residents housed, reduce rent burdens, ensure public lands not privatized, and ensure the building of affordable housing, parks, and projects that would directly benefit the community. Would you work with community members to enact these policies? And aside from building more housing, what would you do to protect the right of these 100,000 constituents to strive state in Santa Ana? Nina, that was tough, thank you.
Thank you, Nubert. Yes, I would definitely work with our community organizations to help in bringing resolution to this issue. It is a very critical, and it's a crisis as well, because I have personal experience with several of my students who cannot concentrate in their class because they've been evicted. And we don't want that kind of burden on these children. They need to be children. They need to focus on their studies. They should not be burdened with these adult traumatizing events in their lives. So, we do need to get some kind of a comprehensive program so that we can get the affordable housing, and then work towards making it easier for everyone to afford reasonably housing that is beautiful and clean and away from gang-infested areas. I am definitely in agreement.
When it comes to housing, I definitely believe in increasing our housing supply and, you know, having affordable housing. I don't think rent control is an answer, because, you know, it has other, you know, effects that are not intended. One of the kids that I worked with at Illumination Foundation, a couple days ago, he said, "Oh, Mr. David, we're moving." And I was like, "Why are you moving?" And I was like, and he said, "Because there's been a leak in my room. Water keeps falling on my bed, which I shared with my brother. And my dad has been telling the guy, he said that I had to fix it, but they don't want to fix it, so we're going to move." So that's something that I definitely want to look at, is code enforcement and making these apartments livable. Up and down the state, we talk about, people, leaders will tell you about rent control and whatnot, but they'll, you know, increase your gas tax where it's unaffordable you can drive. They'll increase your property taxes, and it's other things that we've got to look at as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, first, I would like to work with the community and find out what the best needs are for our community and what is necessary to do to make sure that there isn't the homeless issue and that everybody has a safe environment around them.
So, I see a lot of familiar faces here this evening. And one of the reasons so many of your faces are familiar is because I'm the only candidate at this table who bothered to show up last night and stand in support of this measure. I spoke to the council and I urged them to take action. Shamefully, they did nothing. Now, I've had conversations with some of you, and I know that, you know, while you would like me to say yes to everything on this platform, I'm not in favor of rent caps. But that is not the end of the conversation. We need to ensure that we start implementing comprehensive rent stabilization measures. And I am prepared to start with just positive action. We need to ensure that folks can stay in their home and feel secure in their home. And I'm also in favor of tenant-based rental assistance programs, tenant opportunity purchase, Santa Ana public lands policy, and refining the housing opportunity ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'm Foz.
I'm Foz Sosa, I'm here for Ward 2. Actually, I, this is what I suggest. We should update the general plan for housing, affordable housing for everybody, for all incomes, okay, bottom line. Second, I think we should also encourage co-op. Another measure that we can do is increase affordable rates for across all projects, luxury or whatever it is. That would be a minimum percentage of units available allocated for families who are, you know, in search of need. And in respect to number four, tenant opportunity to purchase act, definitely. I think that should be the case for homes and for apartment complexes. I know there's a state out in the Midwest that they offer that. All new apartments or existing apartments that are going to be for sale, they, the 10th have the first round of recruits through a co-op. And I think these are creative ways that we could, you know, definitely improve within our community and stabilize the housing crisis that we are currently facing, including myself. Thank you. Ward 2.
Thank you. Yes, of course, I'd be interested in wanting to talk to people to figure out how do we move forward. That's how the foundation of moving forward with everything. And I'm sure that a lot of your families were probably similar affected to mine. Because of Prop 13, my family has been able to stay here. We've been able to benefit from these types of programs. So we need to look, as we move forward and have a vision of what implements, what programs and projects can we go forward? How do we keep Santa Ana residents in Santa Ana? We briefly mentioned about first round refusal. Anytime we have a new development, the residents that lived there previously shouldn't have the first option of either purchasing that home or that apartment or having an opportunity to stay within that area. Doesn't it make sense for us to take that our own community? If it wasn't for Prop 13, a lot of people wouldn't be here. As we look to go forward in the future, we need to make sure that we keep Santa Ana residents in Santa Ana. And of course, this needs to be part of the conversation, absolutely. Thank you.
I need to borrow this by a second. Last night, we were at the council meeting for six hours. A few of them in this session. I respect and admire every single one of you that attended. And what's your opinion in demanding of us this? Don't demand. Let's work together. Let's bring the solutions together. Demanding, it only raises a little bit of a question. We cannot demand. We have to get involved. We have to be part of the solution. This rent stabilization, I do believe that it should be in place. Cause of eviction, it has to be judged. It has to be fair for the residents and the people that is renting those apartments and complexes. I really believe in this, but we have to be respectful. We don't demand. What, because at the end of the day, would you like someone as a business owner to come and demand? Well, you have to comply with it. I really, really believe this is fair for the whole city of Santa Ana. You want my seat as Ward 2?
Thank you, ma'am. Be good.
Rent control. I'm sorry, but not rent control. If we do rent control, let me tell you, we can compete with other cities. We need to bring the business owners to come over and help us. We need to get organized, get some funds, a federal money to help the people to buy houses. That's what we need to do. Work together, create a community, go to the city meetings and work together and help the families with low income. Get a housing deals and get some money from the government. We have the people, work with some real estate, a committee from people that is a professional, that can help us, right? But if we do rent control, it's going to get us down with no business owners wants to come here and invest their money. So it's not good for us. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Nina. Thank you.
Thanks. I am in alignment with pretty much everything that's on the list of demands here to remain and prosper. I have seen the other side of, you know, coming back from the holiday break and finding that most of my classroom is gone. I witnessed just how that Artist Village Plaza just really fell silent when all of the El Sol Village Apartments, all those families were only given two months to move, all of them. And there were over 600 units there. That plaza used to be full of families and grandparents and kids. I used to run into my students all the time. And that's the kind of devastation that happens. Now there's nothing there. Now we don't even have foot traffic for the restaurant, for the coffee shops. So we have our rent and our housing issues. Yes, we need to stabilize our rental stock, and we need to make it easy for people to have housing, have a place to live. But we also need to continue, and I would continue, supporting our housing opportunity ordinance, which sets aside 15% of all market rate housing that's built in the city. And there's more to say, but I'll say it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. So we're going to go now to a kind of a rapid-fire Q and A question section. This is basically yes or no answers, which is kind of a quick way for some of the people in the audience to give questions, to get a sense of the standing of the issues. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to be able to do yes or no answer. So anyway, I will hand this here, and you can just hand it off as we move down the line. I'll change it a little bit on the next question, we'll start on this one, which is, do you believe that Santa Ana needs a police commission to hold police officers accountable?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
Yes.
Of course, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you support the legal exchange program operating in Santa Ana?
No.
No.
Yes. Not in residential areas.
Yes or no?
No.
No.
Yes, but it's be approved. I said yes?
Only shelter. Yes.
Do you support the Me Too movement? Do you believe it's valid?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you in favor of Measure X, the $1.3 billion measure?
No.
No.
No. No.
No.
No.
No.
No.
No.
Do you believe that the school-to-prison pipeline is alive in Santa Ana? Do you think it exists?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Would you, if you went office, would you support rate control in the city town?
Sorry, no.
No.
No. I wouldn't.
No.
No.
It's not the same with Bullwood, yes?
Yes, for a couple of years. Yes.
Here's the name of someone endorsed. Are you endorsed by the P O A, by the Police Officers Association?
Hell, no. No.
No.
No.
No.
No. No.
Yes.
Yes.
The city has approved a policy to sell potentially 90 public vacant lots. Would you revoke that policy and protect those lands from being potentially privatized if you were elected? Would you, basically, would you be in favor of keeping those 90 public vacant lots in public hands? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Need more info. These are city-owned lots? I would not support them at all, no. No, no privatization.
Total of 90 properties that are owned by the city that are enslaved and be sold to private developers, in private interest. Would you support keeping them in public lands as opposed to selling them for profit?
Yes.
We need renewed space. No.
We need to keep it in our hands as much as we can.
Those 90 parcels should be donated to the community land trust.
Yes.
You're right. A few of you have off the charts there, so, again, up to the voters to decide. You can follow directions and if not, I guess we're going to have a closer look. So on that, I'm going to move over to closing comments for each one of you. Generally, everybody's been pretty good about sticking to comments here. Two minutes for closing? Okay, we'll just drop to the end and we'll go straight forward.
Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. I really appreciate the time and that you came out to hear what we're all about. I hope what you've learned is that I am an independent thinker. I am somebody who comes to the table with more than 20 years of professional experience in financial services landscape. I understand business. I understand leadership. I understand collaboration. And when I am on the city council, I am ready to start collaborating with all of you. One of the things that is most critical in this election is to ensure that the body that gets to approve the next general plan that defines the direction for the rest of this century and perhaps beyond, that that body represents you. That body cannot represent the interests of the Police Officers Association. They do not get to define our future. We get to define our future. And by voting for me, I will stand for you. I will stand for you, not my family. I'm not here to build a dynasty. I am here to stand for you. Vote for Paul Cuzano's Santa Ana City Council Ward 2. Thank you.
I'm Foz Sosa, I'm here for Ward 2. Little bit about me. I've been living in Santa Ana for 12, 13 years. Made my wife, lover, and remarried. We're here now to stay forever. You know, professionally, I've been working with a homeless service provider, Collaborative. I've been managing a program for seven years now where we help out homeless. We have been managing a program for seven years now where we help out homeless veterans. Every year, we assist 400-plus veterans off the streets of Orange County. We administer VA money, they budget. These are some experiences I think is very important for someone to have for the next council. We do a lot of housing, we do policy advocacy as well on the state, county level. I know who Mr. Carter is, I think he knows who I am too, who are at Riverdale, driven up in camping. Have a lot of experience in that. And I would like to bring this to the city council, to Santa Ana, and help out in our crisis and purpose of homelessness and also housing crisis. And that's what's probably the experience, experience in determining this. We need to update the general plan, you know. So for the law stuff that the city could do, and with your support, and vote hopefully I'll be elected and I will actually contribute in five minutes. Thank you, God bless.
My name is Roman Raina, I was born and raised in the city of Santa Ana. I have lived here my entire life. My brother ended up taking a bad path and I ended up taking a positive path. I see the value of getting involved, I see the value of positive programs. And because of that, it benefited me and moved me in a different direction. I've been championing that same cause for the next generation of leaders. There are several of my students that are in here now, and I shouldn't call them students because they're 30 years old and 25 years old, but when you invest in young people, beautiful things can happen. And I've done this for 30 years. Because somebody didn't help my brother, somebody helped me, I moved in a different direction. The biggest impact in life is another caring human being. At the same token, this next election is key and critical for the direction of Santa Ana for the next, for the next absolutely 12 years. It is key and critical on every single vote and every single candidate that you vote for. Now, some of the candidates, they have different endorsements. And these endorsements come not free. They come with strings to them. This application right here is from the P O A. And the very first question, it says, "Do you believe police officers should have more rights than other people? Do you believe they should have fewer, same, or more?" Why would they even put that in there that they want more rights? That just tells you the mentality that these people have. More importantly, the candidate that accepted their endorsement had to agree to that. My candidate is not here, my opponent is not here. I don't know where he's at, I don't know what's more important for him, but apparently the people are not. Maybe he didn't want to face some of those questions. When you go to the ballot, it's key and critical who you vote for for the city of Santa Ana for the next 12 years and ask yourself, what are they willing to give up and who are they fighting for? My name is Roman Raina, I'm running for work for, I please ask you for your vote.
First and foremost, thank you so very much to every single one of you for being here today and listening to how the win expressed our future answers to you and our community. As I said before, I have five sons I can raise. My family here, being here in Santa Ana for over 40 years. My youngest is 28, my oldest is 43. Youngest recently graduated with his masters in geology. Then from there, I have sons who are working for Union. Seriously, I'm working for workforce, I'm post-alien. As a resident, I've been involved with every single thing that they can ask me to because I would really love to participate. In Santa Ana has been my life, more than ever my life. Dedicated to making it better for anybody else. Why? Because everyone gets up, we all want rights up and about. We have to respect the rights of everyone in Santa Ana because at the end of the day, we are here because we love Santa Ana and together we have the rights after all. As a volunteer for the city of Santa Ana Police Department, for enforcement, community involvement in every single thing that I can put my hands on, I can see a lot of faces here. A lot of faces that perhaps you don't see in a council meeting, in a district meeting, in a neighborhood meeting. I invite these young kids to come to the table, invest 35 years of your life of volunteering for the community, not getting a single penny paid for it by your passion to change this city for better for everybody else. As today, I have only asked for your support. I'm Masias, representing you on word two. Thank you so very much for this.
Miguel Gonzalez, community activist, all my life. Been working with all kinds of communities. It is about time, it is a great opportunity for me to become a city council. Help me out. So I can help you. I wanna be your eyes, I wanna be your ears, I wanna be, I wanna talk with you guys. I wanna work with you guys. I worked with the Black History Parade, I don't know where you guys went. I don't know, we used to have a great celebration with Black History Parade. I worked with Orientals at Lujho in Pec. I worked with, we celebrate the Fourth of July. En mi organización, los 32 por mil, que hacemos la rosca malandres de los santos reyes. For over 13 years, free for everybody. We've been working with the community so much. I know a lot of you guys being like community activists, but it's about time for us to go to another level where we can really represent our community at a different level. We really do. We need, estamos políticos hispanos de la primera generación. Estamos proteger a nuestra gente, a nuestras familias. Por favor, apoyenme. Miguel Gonzalez for city council, word two. Word two, thank you.
Yes, so... All right. So I'm a Santa Ana native, I've grown up here and I've experienced a lot of the same challenges that all of you have. I have strong social justice track record. You can read that for yourself, it's independent, that I have created not just in this city, but in at least half a dozen other cities throughout the Southwest. I won a lot of awards for my social justice work, for my entertainment work, for my work in the arts. I published some books, I've included a lot of anthologies in a couple of textbooks. Also, read for yourself, Santa Ana, sarmientoforssanana.com. But ultimately, with that social justice heart, I know that one of the major challenges we have in the city is revenue. You know, that's why we have these taxes being proposed. Because back in the olden days, I remember, my family's been here since the 1940s, my father and his brothers worked at the sugar beet factories. That used to be our anchor industry. And when that left, then came aerospace, and that became our anchor industry. And for those of you that can remember what Santa Ana was like when we had that aerospace money, we were thriving because we had an anchor industry. And sure, it poisoned our groundwater, so maybe it wasn't the best fit, but now moving forward into the future, we need to bring another anchor industry and we don't have one. We're almost completely dependent on property taxes and, you know, retail taxes, and we can't just tax our citizens forever. So I'm really committed to bringing home the bacon, to bringing home the resources. I'm connected to three very strong industries that are here in Orange County right now. They're technology, tourism, and they are TV and film production, and they all want to be here. And we can write what those agreements look like, we can make sure that we have strong community benefit agreements and that we all benefit from their presence. They don't leave us poisoned, that they leave us better, that we work together in partnership with industry. That's what I bring to the council. So I hope you vote for me, Sandra Sabinco, thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Nina Melosa, word six. I am the best qualified candidate in word six. I have the most experience. I have lived, truly lived in the city of Santa Ana for the majority of my life. I have an impeccable record. As your candidate, I will represent you with a professional image. I've never been arrested, I'm an upstanding citizen. So I am also dedicated to our community. I've organized several, feed the homeless, especially during the winter months when it's most crucial. I'm a teacher, I'm a mentor, I'm in favor of public schools, I want to eliminate public spending, I'm invested in Santa Ana, I want to transparent city government, I would like to increase city revenues and profits, I'm gonna create community partnerships, I'm gonna preserve the city's historical aspects, and I'm going to enforce responsible redevelopment. I'm going to engage our youth, I'm going to look at street improvements, I'm going to have safe communities. I am not gonna vote for sales tax. I'm going to address and resolve the homeless issue once and for all, and I will fight for you, for the working families. So, you know, I grew up in Santa Rita. It was gang-infested, there were drugs, there were drive-bys. And I chose the path rather than the pipeline to the jails. You know, we had hard work in Paris, and we need to do that for our families. We need to get our families involved, our parents educated in keeping the kids close because we're always gonna have those issues. There's gonna be drugs in the schools. And if I can do it, all of you, all of our young kids can do it. And I'm starting that as a teacher, I will do that and I will bring that to the city halls. As president of the Regis and Darrow Community College, I have experience in local government. I've been your elected official for over six years and I will continue to provide that for you.
Hello, everyone. Again, I just want to say thank you so much to the few of you in this room who have reached out to me over the last couple of months, sit down and have a cup of coffee and have open dialogue because that's what it's gonna take to move our city forward and as an elected official, is work with all of you and sit down and have that conversation. You know what, I'm a product of the city. I'm proud of that and I want to get back to my community. I grew up, you know, very disenfranchised, you know, I grew up in the Delhite, you know, neighborhood. The age of two moved to the Memorial Park neighborhood and I've been there my whole life. You know, my dad passed away when I was only three. We were on the verge of foreclosure every other month. I remember just waking up every night, hearing my mom crying over our beds because she was alone, immigrant, no husband, no source of income, and I've been there. I've been there where I've only eaten a cup of noodles for dinner for weeks in a row. I know what it's like. And I visioned what my childhood was like. My vision was, you know, going to the Royal Park and swimming all summer long when I was ragged, when the pool was actually open all summer long, not just two, three days a week out of the week. You know, I think of all these different services and activities that I, you know, partaked in and really helped me grow, helped me and my brothers, you know, not end up in gangs, not end up on the streets, end up with a college education. My mom pushed us and worked so hard to get us a college education. And I want to be that vision for other kids in Santa Ana to see, you know what? Shit, if he did it, then it's possible. You know, you could grow in this city and be somebody. And since Roman brought it up, I want to, you know, read my answer to that first question of my P O A's questionnaire. I believe police officers should most definitely have the same capital rights that any other citizen has. There's no reason a police officer should be treated any less while working than any other citizen in the private public sector. They should have the same rights under the law, it grants it under the, rights under the law.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, you all help us, these access are putting this together. You know, I'm a lifelong resident and I want to bring back and make sure that we have the quality of life we all deserve. There's no need to tolerate the homeless issue, to tolerate what has been going on. We need to make sure that we have the youth programs that are needed to make sure that our youth is successful. And that's what's been missing. We need to bring back community policing, make sure our areas are safe because we deserve the quality of life. Santa Ana deserves it. We are Santa Ana, we deserve it and it's enough. So please, vote for Navegalis for word six. Thank you.
So that'll bring us to a conclusion. Once again, I want to thank the New Health Access for sponsoring this amazing event. We're grateful for the city for the sponsorship of this great convention. As a reminder, the two candidates that did not show up are Phil Misera, running in word number four, and Cecilia Viegas, running for word six. At the same time, I'd like to thank all of the candidates that did come here today, that did put themselves in these questions and gave you a word for success. Thank you, everybody.